Okay, Ms. Barrett.
Present.
Ms. Emfitch.
Present.
Ms. Hubbard, Mr. Jacobs, Dr. Sophia, Mr. Marshall, Ms. Mendelson.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Newman.
Here.
Dr. O'Donnell. Jane. Dr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Spencer and Mr. James.
Okay, we have four of them, so we're calling the meeting to order. Um, everybody put your cell phones off or on by, please. And it's now time to use collective. Sorry, I'm going to be a little different from Jacque. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, since our chairperson is looking for his glasses or his eyes, um, okay, there is going to be a call of the audience. I know, okay. Uh, what we are here about is this special meeting to regarding the municipalities and their services. Since we have been moving forward to be no-kill, the different municipalities are saying that there's a financial burden that we're placing upon them.
You sent me a message that was saying.
And so, this is why we have been asked to.
That's a good comment, it's up here.
Anywhere.
I'm, I'm kidding.
Okay, you're kidding today.
All right, well, Kim always sits right here.
Okay, yeah, so, have you got a bullet point type thing we can go off of? Or we're just going to talk about the need for assessment? And I'm, while you're looking for your paperwork, there is a formal request from James Furey that we get the statistics for an entire month of the welfare calls per municipality or jurisdiction. We need to know how many calls are coming in for welfare per each one of these areas, so we can see what the need is.
What the usage is.
The usage is the need, okay?
Well, also, I think, uh, it's not just the calls, but, because we know we don't service all the calls.
Right.
How many of the calls are actually going on? I mean, they call in, and then what percentage of those calls get serviced?
Right, and also, how many are repeat calls in those areas? That they have to keep going back for, for, uh, resolution? I think that that's, that's essential. Uh, and then, okay.
Okay, so we did the roll call?
Yep.
Collective leadership.
Yep.
Um, we'll do the call with the audience?
Did it.
Did it, okay. Okay, this is the advisory committee, animal care communications, local council. So, what I had done, and we, we talked, we said it would be a meeting, but what I had done on my own, and I'm going to pass these out, is I wrote something, this is just the draft, just for myself, but for the volunteers. And I think we should look at what each of us individually can do as well, and what we will do as a committee. But this is like individual right now. So, essentially, what I'm, is I'm going to be asking, and we, we kind of made arrangements that I maybe will send this to our volunteers through PAC.
Okay.
In a sense, so, so basically, it's a little long, it's a page long, and I try not to do that. This time, it's important. Now, uh, the attachment will be that. And what, what this is, is I broke down all the cities, and so that all the individuals that are volunteers, and this can be sent to anybody, actually, will have a quick way of knowing, the city of Tucson, I live at the city, here's where I get in touch with them. I live at the town of Morana, here's where I get in touch with them. And it goes on and on through Oro Valley, Sarita, South Tucson, and Pima County. So, this is, uh, will be attached to the message when it goes out to all the volunteers. So that the volunteers can mobilize. It's a draft, otherwise I'd let you see it.
We did.
So, so that's pretty easy to see, read, or whatever. And all that information that you sent is here. I don't know, did everybody print, print out and read it, all the statistics and everything?
I was, I read some of it, yeah.
I put it on the tape.
So, I guess we'd start out by, what is it that you think? Anybody have any thoughts on what it is that we would do, or should do, with regard to the different municipalities?
Well, I'm going to throw something out here, because this is something we're going to have to look at because of Phoenix's response. Cats are going to be coming into the equation. Because we don't license cats. And right now, we know Miracle Pop does not service any calls or anything with cats, or anything, unless it's really bad. Um, and we've already heard rumblings about why are we addressing cats from the city of Tucson, because they're, they're not licensed. Right now, we have, as I call it, the Band-Aid, a three-year program with best friends. If we don't act now and say, we need to get education and we need to bring them into the mix, that's going to be one of the first things they're going to say, is, we're not going to participate in, um, this after three years, or a year, or whatever. And, um, we don't have, we don't want them going out, we don't want cats at the, the center. That I can, you can see the writing on the wall. And we do not want to be a major problem. And so, I think one of, one of the things that we really need to do is address the cats now. And we have the opportunity to say, we have a program in place, we can educate the public that now is the time to get your animals altered. If your cat is outside, it must be altered. And that way, when our Band-Aid gets pulled off in three years, hopefully, we're not going to believe too much. Because I can see the numbers are going to go up.
Don't they have, I mean, isn't that part of the whole program now, the cat program? No, we don't have, I mean, the, the whole cat.
It's done, three years, that's it.
Yeah, but isn't that part of the process to make sure that?
The education.
The education, but, but right now, it's the T and R bill. But you still have people going out, we still have people who are not aware that they have to vaccinate their dogs, they have to license them. I can't tell you how many people I educate that this is a misdemeanor. You can lose your job over a ticket from your pet. And so, we need to do an education campaign, and we need to bring cats into the mix. And right now, we have the opportunity to do it because we have this million-dollar project going on, and so, it is only logical. And then, we can say, well, we've got all these cat calls too. And it is a health issue.
Let me ask a question on the cats, the T, the best friends program. I'm not, because I'm not familiar with their doing that. Are they microchipping those animals? They are. Okay. If you know, there may be colony cats that are microchipped now.
Excuse me, um, Ms. Barrett, I believe so.
Okay.
Um, we're vaccinating, microchipping, um, and, um, and, um.
Testing.
Altering.
Altering.
Yeah.
And testing. Yes, that's correct.
That's what I was going to say, too.
Enthusiastically putting that out.
Okay, so, the, so yes, I believe that, that to be the fact. Um, one of the things that we are, one of the things that I think would be important for you guys to know is that we are currently trying to think through long-term, what does sustainability look like on our team, on our side of things? Because we don't want this to kind of be just a three-year blip. Now, I'll tell you that the benefit of a three-year blip, if we get the kind of coverage that we need, is actually going to have a long, the effect is, is long-term, but it's certainly not forever. And I think we need to be thinking about how, as a community, we come up with these solutions for, um, these animals who are free-roaming.
The one thing I see happening, because a lot of these community cats are feral cats, really were domesticated at one time. And somebody left an apartment, they're outside. They're left to, to do their thing, and then they're just feral kitties. Eat, so the education piece is going to be the biggest piece of this, I believe.
Now, and, and I think one of the components, we're not looking at, and.
I don't know, or we'll try, we'll try and do it like, so you can keep the knowledge.
Okay, in the past, I mean, I'm, I'm, my, my daddy was military. The first things my parents did when they moved to a new community, we had dogs, they checked on base, what the base requirements were. And when we were living in the community, they checked right away. The military used to be very, uh, strong about, you make sure you're a good neighbor.
Yeah.
And, uh, getting education out there, and, and, and this might be something we need to do too, because this might be a little lax. Oh, why am I in the military, I'm being transferred, I dumped my animal? We've got to also approach that. And, you know, everybody says, and I, the cat doesn't need as much care. I, it really burns me that they have made that animal a second-class pet, and it is the number-one pet in the nation. And they, there, more people have cats than they have dogs. And, so, we really have to get with the partners, and we need to get these, we need to get the supermarkets on board, we need to get the box stores on board with places that they have information out there saying, hey, did you know this? And it's healthier to do this, let's take it practical. It's healthier to take this stance, and also, um, help your community. Help your community, it's, it's going to be better advantage, this is what they can cause. You've got the emotional support of an animal. I mean, let's face it, everybody, when they're down, there's nothing like cuddling an animal. But then you also have the other aspect where it can create problems, like damage, especially if they're free-roaming.
Okay, right now, well, what I'm looking at right now, though, is, what I'm trying to see if we could end up focusing on is, we have the city of Tucson, primarily, in South Tucson, but primarily, the city of Tucson is saying, we're looking at backing out. So, what is it that we, as a committee, want to do? I mean, they, they have meetings that we can address. We have meetings that we can ask to have with them. So let's say, for, assume for a moment, we say, let's have a meeting with them. So what would be our, our points of address as we're meeting with them? So we already know, I, we have all this right here, the talks about, we're Huckleberry, and Jane, and the director, all met, not met, but all have been discussing, some of them have met with them and talked about what's going on, and what they're not going to do. And so we know a lot of the fallback positions and stuff. But it, and we need to open up a, a line of dialogue between us as well, not just them, that, as a committee, this is what we see. That, first of all, we don't see the county backing off the positions taken, because that's not what we want to do either. We want to continue. So they need to do the same thing. How and what do we say? I mean, do we say, I'm just throwing me out here, do we say, do you want to, if, if you continue with what we're doing now, which is what every progressive city in the country is starting to do, maybe you should add a seat on the committee and have some direction as to, or at least some input into the direction we're going, things like that, Dr. Smith.
Didn't they all have a seat initially? What happened to them? Wasn't there some of the law enforcement in the city?
Oh, okay, this is the, I'm going to give you the history of this position, because I've, I've been on here over 20 years.
Okay.
When I came onto this position, there was actually somebody who worked in the city budget office.
Okay.
And they were proactive about getting signs and things posted. Uh, we had somebody crunching numbers. Uh, after John stepped down, there was another woman. And she was very, very good, she actually was on the committee for three years, and those people attended.
Right.
Then, somebody decided, gee, let's get law enforcement. Sergeant Lewis was here, and then we've had a variety of officers. One other person has, was, she came in and she'd make maybe 50% of meetings. Uh, and then, since that time, their representation has gone way down.
But I thought they asked to be rerepresented.
They have asked it, and their representative has not come. It's been six months since that communication went out. Now, uh.
But whether they do, or they don't, or whether it was bad, or it wasn't, and this may be another way of saying, getting them to say, okay, we know we're in a losing battle. I mean, they're going to be, and that's what we're going to try and do as a committee overall, is notify the community as a whole, Pima County, and whichever cities, and that this is where the city of Tucson wants to go. So it's sort of like a public relations nightmare, I would hope.
Oh, yeah.
So then, once they kind of feel that in the back of their head, what do they do then? Well, I would say, if it was me and I was running it, well, then let me get into that committee and get into the decision-making of what's going on there, so I can at least minimize the damage.
Well, here's, here's the other thing, and I just thought of this. We, a couple times a year, we would actually have a large public meeting down at the Public Works area. And those meetings were sent out over, they was at Channel 12, which is the city of Tucson. Because I hear a lot of people say, hey, I saw you on TV last night, I actually sat down and listened to this and learned some things. And the other thing is, I mean, people who are involved with animals, they know we need the third Thursday of the month issue. I've never seen this go out to the calendar. There is a public calendar that's what's going on in the community, um, that the news people has, and it's probably free. They might just put it up, say, you know, speak up and, and get this out. And, and, um, maybe, you know, we can get like a Tucson Weekly, or something saying, this is what's happening, you need to speak up, you need to come, it's an issue. It, you're, it's, it's, it's important, because you, you're dealing with your children's fets. We're the bad guys. I can't tell you how many people say, oh, they're just going to kill us. Like, we're not killing animals. And we've got to change that, and that's in the schools. We've got to also get an educator in the schools.
Okay, with that.
Okay. We're off to education.
Yeah, I know, and that's all, back to this.
And then.
Wait, I'm talking about the city?
I'm, and now here's the next chapter. So what happens, you've got Johnny in class, and he goes home and he's, and he goes to mom, guess what I learned in class today, and do you know what? You need to call your representative on the city of Tucson, because mom, this is what they want to do. They want to start killing the animals again. I'm sorry, I'm.
That's a good place, as another, as a, as another prompt to you. But I think right now, that's a slow prompt. I think what we need to do is start governing meetings. They have open meetings, and they have quality audience, and get on the agenda, from PAC. And, but not just you. As many of the advisory committee, as many of the people who show up here should show up there. We should make their meetings so uncomfortable for their representatives that they don't have that choice, but to go along with what we want to do. Because once people start showing up, and we let the radio stay, remember when we had that big meeting, I mean, the news people here, with no-kill starting, coming in and talking to us about that? That's what we need to do, we need to go, we need to let the, the TV stations know what's going on. Why PAC advisory committee and all the volunteers are going to the city of Tucson's meetings?
I agree, I think that's a good way to do it.
But I think that's where we need to go. Like, my, my other question was, Morana, Oro Valley, Sarita, the other four, are they on board with us, or are they dragging their feet?
Oro Valley's on board with us.
Oro Valley's on board, okay.
And Sarita, right? Or is it Sarita?
Mr. Chairman, members of the advisory committee. So, uh, I think some of these are really great ideas. Um, you're absolutely right, I think Oro Valley and Sarita are, um, uh, sort of more on board. I think all the jurisdictions have sticker shock. I think the, the biggest sticker shock comes to the city of Tucson. So, the other point that I was going to sort of make sure that you were aware of, um, is that, um, as you're sort of thinking through how you want to approach this communication strategy, I do know for a fact that we just got, as in like today or yesterday, um, a request for, uh, uh, the identification of a new person from the city of Tucson to serve on this board, um, some people from the fire department. Um, and, um, and I'm not sure how they come up with it, but, you know, we, we, we just, but I thought it was important for you guys to know that, that they are continuing to, to look at this. I do think that in the, in the grand scheme, I, I think part of it is, um, is trying to, to show the, the value of, of the services that we offer here. And, and by the same token, the downside, what happens when we don't?
Yeah, and, and I want to also say one of the things. We didn't have this problem when it was called rabies control. Okay? It's right in your face. Um, and, and people tend to forget about, oh, it's the Animal Care Center. And that's nice and soft and fluffy. And I tell people, well, it's part of the health department for a rea, for a reason. And, you know, we care about our animals. And we need to do a ribbon campaign too. When we're going to these meetings, we need to have everybody wearing the same color ribbon. Because let me tell you, they're looking out, and somebody's not speaking, but somebody's sitting there wearing the same color rib, ribbon, they're going to say, you know what? And we also put something else, and I vote. And I've actually stood up and said, and this is where I reside, and I'm a registered Democrat. And I have no problem going to those meetings. All right, I'll speak up, do whatever's necessary.
I have a comment that I'll make on the data that was provided as one. Tucson has the highest percentage of donations, they need to realize that. Really, probably. They have 52.72% of the donations came out of Tucson's.
Because of the ones that are licensed around.
I'd like to say, without, make sure, like, call them, right?
This is donations, so that's their voters speaking that they want this.
Right.
Um, they need to understand that. And that was one of the biggest things I saw. They also have the highest.
Use it.
Yeah, the highest usage.
They have the highest usage. Um, and they have a very high story rate. It's as high as the counties.
I think all of that seems to be in line with, you know, the 50-some percent of donations in line with the 50-some percent of the dogs that we get from them overall, and in line with 50-some, I mean, so that seems to be in line all the way down.
Yeah.
So, but what you guys are talking about, to me, okay, so, it makes sense to me. So, let's look at the mechanics of how we would do this. We're in agreement, were we, anybody not in agreement with that would be a route that we would take? No. Okay, so now, rather than beat that to death, we're already, you know, in agreement. So now, it's the mechanics of how to do it, because we want to get to that point. So, as a committee, I'm, I'm thinking also that the committees of all should meet with the city of Tucson. Whatever designated representatives they want, we would at least ask to meet with them. And have all this data that we have, and, and basically study it, so that everybody can talk from data only. And not give history, and we stay on, stay on point with what it is we want to convey. And then in addition, then the mechanics of that part. When do they meet? Well, I have that all down.
Yeah.
We know what they need. How do we get that out to everybody? How do we let everybody know that? You know, stuff like that. Now, remember, anytime we're going to go, then you're going to end up having to put out that the committee is going to over there. We're not going to say anything, but it's a, we're all together, so then we have to do that. Yes, Dr. Smith?
I think we need our volunteers on board, as you said. And we have to get our volunteers also coming to meetings.
Yes.
Because when they showed up at the Board of Supervisors, it was very impressive to see all the turquoise shirts on the roof. And when they came to the board of, uh, when we were doing the, um, the ballot, trying to get the 415 on the ballot, all those turquoise shirts really show, and so that. And that is really, maybe whatever color ribbon you want for rabies control, should go with the turquoise shirt, yeah.
Make it turquoise ribbons.
So, but we need to get as many of our volunteers there, as well as their groups, because, as well as the.
The rescue groups.
Rescue groups. That's a lot of people.
It is, and, and you know, one of the things, though, that I noticed that when we first started, we were able to get them to go to Pima County. And so, the Board of Supervisors listened, and, and the leadership from Pima County listened, and, um, we were gaining a certain amount of voice. But when 415 came on board, I tried pretty much the same type of thing, and we didn't get as many, not even close, to, to try and get that piece. That's the reason why I'm phrasing it in this letter, that this can all unravel. I mean, it's not a doomsday letter, but it's, this can start to unravel. And we can't just all of a sudden sit back and say, no, we're doing fine, we're not going to do it. So, I'm hopeful that it kind of does what it did when we first started with Pima County.
I have an, I do have an idea, and this, I don't know if I'm right or not. We see there are events, members from the Board of Supervisors at these events. We don't see members from the city of Tucson, counseling at the events here. And perhaps, if we invite them to come meet with us here, show them the facility, and say, city of Tucson, city of Tucson, this is why we're doing, we're tired of having these animals euthanized. We would like you to come out, we'll show you the improvements that the city of Tucson has, has been instrumental in doing. They've been a leader nationally. And let's, you know, push forward, and maybe if we, we watch to come out here, because you can talk about it, if they don't see it, if they see it here, it's going to.
That's a good idea.
Do they think, do they think, and they, I'm not sure who the they is, feel that once bond was passed, that everything's going to be done? I mean, that everything's taken care of by that bond, is that their issue, is that their philosophy? That since the bond is there, that everything's taken care of now, they don't have to do anything else?
Dr. Smith?
Mr. Newman, Dr. Smith? Dr. Dr.
No, I, I, I don't actually think that that's the case. Uh, I think that they're pretty agnostic in terms of, you know, the, you, folks voted with their, um, folks voted, um, in a resounding way to support them. Something during an election that liberal, what would have been called liberal causes, didn't very, very poorly. So, um, I think it speaks volumes. Um, I think that they are most concerned about what it takes to, um, operate, um, the facility and, and and how much, I mean, and, and I feel for the, the towns and cities, because, because they, just like us, are, are having a bit of a budget crunch. And so they're having to make some, um, some tough decisions. However, I believe, um, that, um, putting, I, I, I don't, I don't believe that we can sort of throw away the animals as part of the solution for how to deal with some of the budget challenges that we face. Uh, and that's part of the reason why we at the county are not going to back down. But also why we sort of challenge when people say, well, you know, that's one less police officer in the street. Well, yeah, but these animals are generating lots of calls to your law enforcement and to your neighborhood association, so we believe these things have a lot of value, um, so.
You know, one of the things that I've noticed, and I was on the, on the, a while back, it's almost cities and, the government does this a lot, um, where it's almost like, I won't use the word extortion, but they put up a front of teachers and first responders as the people that get cut. Which is really unfair, because if I was telling you, there's, there's a million other positions in government, and I'm well aware of that coming from that, that you could cut injury compensation, you could cut safety, you could cut, uh, half the secretaries at the main building. I mean, there's a lot of things that can be cut without cutting a teacher, you know, or a first responder. But that's who goes first, why? Because we all say, oh, we don't want, we need teachers, we need these.
It's an emotional.
Yes. That's why, I think we have to be ready when we're talking like that, to say, if you guys have, nobody can ever say, at least, I'm not going to accept, that we don't have a certain amount of, for a better word, fat inside our budget. Every budget does. And it's just a matter of knowing where it's at, being good enough a manager to see where it's at, and taking the right action. But, I mean, that could come in our, in our dialogue, right?
Well, the idea of they don't support animal control, well, that's, but how do you think it's going to cost them to go out and do, you know, any part of this, because they can't just work animals for all they're, or like the entire city of Tucson?
And what happens when somebody gets admitted, and the city of Tucson gets sued?
Well, those, those are all points, I think, points of concern that we would be making to them. Like, like the calls, like Jane said. They call, I'm just going to take another, they call a thousand calls in the month of January. And we then service 80% of those calls. So, as to your constituents within the city, we can be telling them, that's 800 calls you're going to have to take care of, because we're not going to take care of, that's part and parcel of our, the whole program, which is to take care of things out there, pick up dogs and cats that are dead, you know, all sorts of things. Are you guys going to do that? You know, but those are all good points. I think we need to be ready to make.
And we're looking to house these animals to be, what is the cost of that?
We could say, we don't believe that.
To house them for the three-day law.
We don't believe this shelter should be housing a dog for three days just to be killed. So if we pick them up in your city, you find a place to house them.
Rock, roll, in your front yard. Mm-hmm. Uh, the other thing is, what they tend to forget, Nancy Emfitch, they, they tend to forget that a lot of times, our animal control officers, our animal care officers, are the ones to spot a problem at the house, where CPS needs to come in, or there is a situation of abuse, or they're more alert. So they're also helping other agencies, it's a social aspect too, that they're not going to have.
Dr. Smith?
I'm, someone's letter in here, I don't know if it was Jane LeShor or Chuck Huckleberry, stated that they want, if, if the county or the city refuses to pay some money, they want them to send, pay some money to do the euthanasia. That they don't want to put that extra burden on our employees, and that is really.
It is, but I, I think, I have a concern with having, the city employee coming to a county facility and euthanizing animals without a complete knowledge of the protocol that's used here.
I don't think that was.
I know, it's more of a threat.
I think it was more of a threat. Every, I mean, either of what the burden is, not just the money, but it's that emotional burden of doing the euthanasia.
And where do you put the dogs for the three days? Why should we pick up the dogs from there? They need, they need to actually have a shelter for those three days if they're mandated by law to hold those dogs before they euthanize them. Rather than a mis-shelter.
If they're not supporting the program, why would we be picking up their dogs at all at that point? You know, they'd be picking up their own homes, and etc.
Or dropping off, when people want to drop off. Although that's a, that's a real issue, I think, for us, if people want to drop a dog off. What are we going to do, say no?
And they're just going to let it loose?
Exactly, they'll just let it loose outside.
Yeah. Now it's a county dog.
Now it's a county dog, yeah.
Mr. Newman, members of the committee, I, I think that that's really where the, that's where really the rub is, right? So, so worst case scenario, um, you know, if this, if a city were to want to not be engaged as part of these intergovernmental agreements, um, that provide some resources and put some demand on us. I worry what happens to those animals. I worry that, from a humanitarian animal standpoint, but also from a practical government standpoint, I worry that, that, that somehow they will be dumped, that causes its own set of issues. I, I worry that, that people will take their matters into their own hands. Um, that causes, well, we've seen, we have, um, knowledge of, of, of folks actually being injured because they tried to euthanize themselves their dog, you know? Uh, it's just, it's the kind of thing that, it just is full of challenges. So, um, to be clear, that what we're allowed, we will do whatever we agree to in that intergovernmental agreement. We do have kind of sort of minimum standards and our standards on, um, in terms of how we evaluate and how we decide which animals need to be destroyed, um, are, are not gonna change. So, so if, if, I would envision that if they're using our facility, it would be our standards. Alternately, we could turn the animals over to them and they can take them to wherever they wanna. I mean, I, I, I don't say it as a threat, but I, I say that as a, that would be the practical implication. If, if a city or town decided that they would not want to enter an agreement, um, I could see us saying, somebody's brought an animal from your jurisdiction when you wanna come and pick it up.
Exactly, and I think that's the part we must talk in, is that, the same way we meet with them, we're sitting, and there they are on the other side. Being able to articulate our issues now amongst ourselves and be ready to, to be able to bring those points up. Because I don't know if they've thought of that, maybe they have and maybe it hasn't been brought up or whatever, but it all needs to be put out on the table with them. So that they're thinking, this isn't just as easy as, we're not gonna pay. There's, there's a lot to it.
And, and I don't know if we can set a budget to explain that, how much they would have to spend again to do it themselves.
Even if they went back to the three day.
Even if they went back to the three day, they'd have to house it, they'd have to set up a facility that we already have across the I-ten, that it might cost them more money. Plus, they might have to train people, I mean, if we could get a budget together to show them how much they would be spending if they took the fifty, well, we know how much they're spending. Just show them how much it's gonna cost them anyway, that they're not gonna work with us.
But even so, even though, when you take their part of our entire budget, that's not the same thing as your own startup.
It's more the startup.
Look, cause that's, there's a fair amount of redundancy.
Cause they have to have more staff, more accountability.
Yeah, here's, and here's the other thing, they're then going to have to go to the voters. And the, the people who do property taxes are and say, oh, by the way, we know you wanted this facility, you spoke up, you wanted this facility, but we don't want it. So, now we're asking you to fund a new city, uh, facility and, and just for us in Tucson, plus all personnel, we pay for all the training, everything. And so, this, we wanna ultimately save, save money and we're not going to have any kind of real effect for another twenty years, because we'll be so far on hold.
But these are, these are all really important points for us to have in our pocket when we're talking to, like, you're able to get on TV or you're able to get on the radio show or anything like that, to be able to bring them up. Have those type of debates and things. You lead them to these conclusions by just the dialogue that we have, they'll have those conclusions as they're talking amongst themselves, rather than me putting your face in it. I'll just lead you to it, you'll come up with the conclusion, it's much better. I mean, what could say, have you thought of this? Oh, yeah, I guess you could do that, but oftentimes it goes better when they walk back and think, you know, that, by the way, I'm thinking of this on my own. It works usually with other work.
Historically, a few years back, probably what, five, seven years back, where Valley was building their own shelter, do you remember that, Nancy?
It stopped immediately.
It stopped immediately, once they started looking at pricing.
And, and, and one of the things that I'm gonna tell you right now, just so you guys know.
And they're on board with us.
They're on board. They are the cheapest places to do euthanasia for the rescue groups.
Oh, really?
A valley on, uh, they give, they will do a basic euthanasia where the owner can come in, and a lot of clinics will do this, it's fifty dollars. Valley will actually send the animal out to the, the, um, the landfill. A lot of vets don't do this. A standard euthanasia for the public to walk in and even if they wanna be there with, if they don't wanna be there you're talking three hundred dollars, and if it's an emergency, you're talking more. And people just can't afford that. So, that alone, you know, the service that we provide here is, is phenomenal.
It is. I have a question though. Right now, we know our costs based on an incorporation of the municipalities within the umbrella of the shelter. Now, I know we have a lot of people that are in finance and stuff that have the capability of breaking out, what would a new startup capability be just for? Even taking the minimum, taking the things that they would, let's say they just would euthanize a dog after three days and not keep them, what would be, they could do like a break out of the cost? That'd be a building, food, uh, the staffing, the increased cost of their, cause once you start to hire, then they have costs of hiring, cause they have to have people in the city to hire, unless they're gonna, unless they're gonna incorporate those increased, um, duties into what they already have. Like in personnel and stuff, as you're putting out postings and whatever.
Yeah, there's all that.
Insurance.
And insurance and all that over.
Yeah, and, and everybody said, we'll just do that and incorporate it into our present program, it doesn't always work that way. Those directors of those things with like, their health or whatever, if they have that, would say, no, we need more people.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, uh, my, my humble opinion, kinda taking a, a, an expression that Kim uses frequently, my humble opinion is that whatever model we were to create and we could, um, is, is always gonna be, people are always gonna take poke holes at it. You know?
Yep.
And I, and I think that a wise strategy might be to say, so what's your solution? How, how do you really think you can do this for less? Because somebody might say, well, I'm just gonna outsource it to, I don't know, Penale County or somewhere else, you know? I'm, I'm gonna contract with a different contractor, we don't, we don't, that, that is, that it would be something that they could do. Now, having said that, and, and, and understanding that these are smart people that we're dealing with in terms of the cities and towns, I can't help but believe that they've done the math themselves. I don't, I, 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 and so I think that, to a sort of extent, they have been having conversations, they, they may not be very happy with those results, but I, but I believe, and, and I have no way of knowing for sure, but I believe that they've been doing a fair amount of exploration. Um, and that, and it's probably better to say, so, okay, fine, show us how you're gonna deal with this loose animal ordinance. How are you gonna deal with, you know, these other issues? Cause, cause our, our statutory mandate is fairly narrow, you know, rabies control, you know, I'll, I'll control your rabies. Um, and we, we could do it very inexpensively and we'll, we'll do a good job of it. But these other sort of quality of life issues, things that are in ordinance in their code, um, you know, challenge is, so how are you proposing to meet that obligation?
I agree, that's good.
There's a, um, the Association of Animal Control Facilities that comes out periodically and they do an assessment. And they provided us about that, and that time, it's probably five, six years since they were here. And they actually recommend how many officers per capita they are, that is necessary. And perhaps the city of Tucson needs to receive a couple copies of this and say, you know, this is not up to date, because this was several years ago and it was a very thorough assessment. And they met with rescue, they met with the advisory committee, they met with staff, they met with members in the community.
What's it called?
I believe we've referenced it, I'm sorry.
I wanna say Wacapa, but that's not.
I, I believe that we reference it in our five jurisdiction study, six jurisdiction study. I believe it's, it's one of the references that's in there, and you're absolutely right, people have looked at, created these theoretical models. This is what FTE you need for this kind of jurisdiction to do these kinds of things. Um, and they're all pretty, like, like you say, it's pretty kind of industry standards. I mean, uh, I, the information's out there, uh, these are smart people, I believe that they know, but they can always be reminded of it.
Well, and, and it's gotta be at least six years, because I'm thinking about the terms of the chair, uh, that they were here. The other thing is, they also need to be made aware that the Humane Society does not police, they do not provide things that they, that this, this facility takes in. We don't turn anybody away. Whereas private rescue can say, our doors are full, we've taken as many as we have. And that there's a very real need for this. It's again, rabies control, we have these issues, and the public has spoken, that, that animals are a very big part of our lives. On most part, I think most people enjoy having animals around them. And so, we need to have that, that document, we need to, to find it and maybe check to see if there've been some different standards updated, uh, for per capita. And just say, hey, this was brought in by a national organization. And we always get the comparisons too for like Albuquerque or, or similar studies saying, this is what they're doing. And this is a national trend, this is what comparative cities are, do you wanna do this? And there again, and then it's also educating and, and making the public aware of what's going on.
Well, people see what is going on in their committees, I mean, they're doing it the way you're talking about, but I don't know if it would be televised or anything like that, if, when we have the meeting. Well, when we do request that meeting, and I'm, and I'll make that request, that we meet with whomever is there going to, uh, direct us as being in that meeting, our demeanor, we have to talk about the demeanor that we project. In my opinion, it can't be antagonistic.
Not confrontational.
And non, that's right, it just needs to be informational.
The other thing is, we need to have it in the evening. The reason I say we have to have it in the evening. Yeah, they, they also have it during the day, and they may say, we'll meet with you during the day. We want an evening meeting because more members of the public are going to be able to come. And if we publicize that this topic is going before the mayor council, we may have a very large outpouring from the, the community. I'd love it if they say we have to adjourn to the Tucson Community Center. That would be absolutely fabulous, but you know, it's, it's, it's essential that, that we look at this aspect in the community. If we push it beforehand, we get the word out, this is coming for days, so that they know what's coming, and at night.
Okay.
I have a question. When you're talking about meeting with them, you're talking primarily the city of Tucson, or are you talking about call?
Well, I think it's the, the request would go to, well, that's, that's a big question. Should we meet with all of them, all of the representatives of every community that is a part of, uh, this? I mean, with the invitation, we go out to all of them? Or do we not send it to the ones that already have our, uh, agreement? Or do it individually, with just the ones that don't have, or are contemplating not having an agreement, yes?
I think we're wasting their valuable time, meeting with ones that are already on board with this and supportive of us. And that's just gonna be confrontational with them. I don't wanna cherry pick, but at the same time, I think the city of Tucson is the biggest stakeholder that we have to deal with first. We could prioritize if we wanna meet with the other groups, that's kind of my opinion.
I think you can go Tucson, city of Tucson first, and if we can get them on board, I would imagine the other two will probably follow. It's Miranda and South Tucson, I think we can get the city of Tucson to agree. I think the others will follow. Or it'll be easier to convince them, so I think we should stick with just work with the city, work on the city of Tucson first. Yeah, I, I don't know.
I think if that people discover, because if you're going to ask somebody, what are you going to do about the issue? Well, South Tucson may see this, Miranda may see this, Tucson, and they may be cross, they're in a focus.
Yeah. Uh, Mike, is it still, Miranda, or at one point, it, it was, we'd only go out when Miranda called us. I know South Tucson, it used to be that enforcement used to have to call, we didn't go out patrolling the area or whatever, or resident had to come in from a, an agency to go out and, and respond, and that's been several years. But that's how it was for many years down in South Tucson, that, I mean, it was a miles per city, you know, and the police would call. And pack would go out.
And what does this
Uh, and I'm just, I'm just afraid that they're gonna say, well, we'll be going, of course, that's a burden to their law enforcement, to turn it over to law enforcement. But I think we do need to meet with the individual municipalities, as Helen said, because we don't want somebody else saying, hey, I like that idea. And well, we'll go with that and it may backfire. The other thing is, they're gonna say it's apples and oranges, when you're dealing with forty thousand versus a half a million people, there's a big difference there. And so, um, how they're going to resolve these situations are probably much different. And so, I think we, we really need to do this, and we may even say, if you'd like to make an invitation, if you wanna have a private meeting, we could come in on a weekend and have the council meet with the committee, and then we can go out and have a public meeting so that we can hear from our constituents in the committee. But I would like to see, that's, that, I, I don't like that idea very much.
Doctor, I don't think we can have a private meeting. We're an actual committee, when we have a meeting.
No, we could have, oh, well, you can
You can't, you cannot.
This, okay, this committee or this, this advisory committee has had closed our sessions.
Yeah, but we would need to find out exactly what are the parameters that are gonna close their session? And I have not been informed of how that works yet.
Cause I know that, I know that the mayor council
Until I, we're not going to do, cause I'm not gonna get in trouble. Please, let's have one person talk to you at a time.
I could say we're better off with a public meeting, I think, cause then we'll have the public behind us. Obviously, the people in the city of Tucson who run the community, the elected representatives, feel they're doing what's best for their community. If they get people who are coming, who voted for proposition four fifteen, and who don't want animals for damage for three days, and they see that their community is behind animal and dog pack, they'll think a little stronger about it. I think we need a community behind us, I don't think closed doors is the way to work.
I agree, and, and a lot of it has to do, I think, with just what we were talking about. As a, as a member of the county, if you live in the city, you're already paying for this new facility. And even though they're talking about the increased cost of actually running it, that's part of the cost, but you're paying for a building that you're not gonna be using. You're still gonna pay for it.
That's right, I, I don't, yeah, that's great.
For that building, and, and here's the other part, right now, we're not even staffing where we need to be staffing. So, if they're complaining about how the cost of what we're running now, if we staffed it according to what we had to staff it and we were running it maybe as inefficiently as some places are running theirs and they're staffed properly though, their bill would be even higher. I think those are all good points for us, is that this is a cheap, cheap cost for right now, with what you're getting. We're forty positions under everybody else.
Yeah, do they run the same way, do they run the same way we run, meaning they're a call to audience and yeah, so they definitely want the audience.
Feels like I'm the seventies again.
What?
Seventies. Okay, um, so I'm gonna request through, well, probably through you, a meeting that we would be able to have with them, the committee is having with them. I'll send out this though via your organization, that we'd agreed that it'll go through them to all the peoples, cause I don't have their emails and they can see what's going on. It, you know, that's why I made a draft, so that you guys can see it and make sure that it falls in line. But this, it's coming from me, so the county knows, I mean, this isn't you guys doing it, it's just me doing it to volunteers.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, a question for you would be, is your goal here to meet with elected leadership or, or with city staff? Because, because we could think about that being part of the strategic approach here. You know, very easy for us to probably connect you with, um, staff, on the staff side, probably more challenging for us to make those connections quite as tightly on the elected side. Not for any other reason than, than electeds talk to electeds, and staff talks to staff.
That's true.
So, it's just something to consider. Having said that, I, we can, we can start working it through and, and I can have Kim come back to you with, this would be our plan for how we would try to get this invitation done. Whether they accept the invitation or not, that's something else. this would be our plan for how we would try to get this invitation done. Whether they accept the invitation or not, that's something else. Um, you know?
I think, I think we need to start, once this goes out to volunteers though, we need to start, the process is gonna be more than twofold. Actually, there's gonna be a variety of fronts. Going to the committee, going to the meetings, they're somewhat blindsided by the things we're saying, a lot of them in the, I think in the elect, elected meeting that they have. And we're bringing up things, they're looking at their staff. We need to be educated in what they're talking about, I don't know what they're saying and why they're saying it and things like that. If they haven't met with us already, they'll be quick with, I think, to want to meet because they need to have answers. And know, I would wanna know where people like us are coming from, is what I'd want. All the information they can get, so. But we need to start, just a moment. We need to start that front going at the same time, I think, is what we're trying to set it up.
There's one critical individual you need to be aware of. She works in the mayor's office, Lisa Markiela. She used to be the head of ALA here. She was on this advisory committee. She is, I don't know how much of an activist she is, but she actually did an audit of this facility several years ago, which was not completed. But she is very much aware of a lot of the concerns that go on here and I don't know where that's going to be. And there's going to be, you know, they're going to be going to, to her on some of these issues because she's familiar with the, um, well, or ten years ago, the animal welfare climate and philosophies. And so this is somebody that, I'm just saying, we need to be aware of because they're gonna be going to her as a resource, I'm sure of it. One, she is in the mayor's office as one of his assistants. And two, she does have this background.
Okay, is there anything else we wanna talk about on this issue before we adjourn? Do we want to meet again after this goes out to, after this goes out to all the volunteers? And so I could let you know what it is the volunteers are saying. Because we each need to mobilize and try and go after people we know as well, within the rescue groups. Can you even help us with the rescue groups?
The other thing is, we know the Humane Society and well, there's a lot of the volunteers in the city.
And you could put together your bullet points as a list of, of, of all that things we talked about tonight. Um.
I have, right now, I have, uh, community calendar to find out when they're having it. And as far as, um, when we go to the city council, uh, the committee with the, of us, the volunteers, city council, uh, doesn't come to our events, possibly inviting them to our events and to our meetings or whatever. That's the council themselves. Copy of the manual, uh, that, that speaks to the issue of industry standards. I didn't have the name translated, but, um.
Comparison of our.
You mean, you mean.
And a comparison of our, the jurisdictions that are similar.
Well, you mean, well, they have a copy of that report, but we have that. The, the same one that, that does the comparison that was sent out, I believe they have that, right?
Yeah. Did you do the five, six jurisdictions same?
No, well, were you talking about that? Are we talking about us compared to?
Compared to Albuquerque and those, and the services that we have.
Yeah, I think they got that.
That we need to just do a quick update because that's level of change. That's level of change. And so this is what, what's been said because we don't.
Well, and, and one of the things that, when we're talking to them, when I requested initially to show where PAC was, I requested a staffing analysis. And a staffing analysis is different than necessarily a comparative analysis. Because when you're staffing a facility, you want to start from the ground up. And that's really hard to do. So you gotta have a lot of really people that are well versed in how do I staff. Most places aren't like that unless you have them on staff. You gotta borrow them or contract to do that. So the county went with a comparative analysis. And, and that's good because you can do a comparative compared to other, whether it would be cities or whatever you're looking at. For us, that's good because we know, we were so far behind everybody that a comparative analysis would show that, look how bad we're doing, in comparison to everybody else. I, I mean, I would actually believe that we fare better under comparative analysis than a staffing analysis. Because if anybody's overstaffed, a comparative analysis shows, I mean, a, uh, actual staffing analysis would say, well, they're overstaffed. And that usually happens in the government. You're overstaffed and not understaffed. Never.
Never.
And so that's why, you know, we're happy with a comparative analysis.
We also need to make sure we emphasize that best friends at PetSmart chose to fund the TNR program here because we are so proactive and we are progressive. That, that's critical. Because they could've just said, no, this is what.
One of five.
One of five, you know, that, that we, we chose because of the mindset of the community. And the administration, the governing administration in the community, how they back that mindset.
Yeah, that's good.
But all of these policy points, I believe you should have a list of these so that everybody on the committee who goes to these meetings has that. So that we're not thinking off the top of our head, that we have everything written down as bullet points.
And if you ever watch that, that show, um, I forgot whichever one it is, has to do with their cops.
No.
And what they do is, they go criminalize. If you'll pay attention to how they do it, they, they give out all this information to us, the, the viewers. One person isn't doing it all. They kind of say, and this person is a, usually a white male, da-da-da-da, and kills people like this. They stop. The next person does, the next person does, the next person does. And if, if you're paying attention, that's what they're doing. We kinda want that to happen at the meeting. We don't want you doing all the talking, or you, or you, or me. You know, so we wanna make sure that everybody then chimes in with their part.
So you want script it and everybody knows what.
Just like when you put on a case or anything, it's really directed. Every, no one's doing anything, but, I mean, you're not even sitting. Even how you sit, how you talk, how you say what you're gonna say, no gritting your teeth. You know, basically you want to come across as
respectful.
A, a normal person getting up in front of them, talking at some point. Yeah, it's very strict.
Okay, good.
Would you be sharing those same talking type points and thought processes with the volunteers at some point before they show up?
I do, but you know what? I fail on a lot of that. Oftentimes, I, I do say that to volunteers. When you're talking to the county board supervisor, they'll hit up and, you know. And it works pretty good. But, you know, you don't have some volunteers that will, yeah. But you know that sometimes it's good. Sometimes it's good to have a couple do some things that shows how reasonable other people are.
Sometimes that emotion helps, okay? You know, people can speak.
That's right.
They're emotional. And sometimes it really helps get other people thinking about what they're saying. Even if everybody doesn't agree with it, at least the emotions in there are for a good reason.
Yes. Okay. With that, we'll, we'll get them the minutes. Um, you know, I'll send those out to, to all of us and with the notes. And then hopefully, I guess we'll get some information from you and kind of get started.
Okay, I'll be honest.
Hopefully the audience. The audience.
I have one more question. Did you decide it's gonna be?
More people would have been disappointed.
Yeah.
Would you guys read the draft and you could give me your input directly to me?
Email.
Email me.
Okay. We do have a, a request that, on this, that they get a little more notice, so that.
You would've had more people here if there were more notice.
Okay. We're trying.
It's kind of a quick one.
We can, that's the thing, people will be at twenty-four hours. Yeah, so.
Yeah, but we're trying to do it so that, yeah, more people can kind of. Special when we know if we're going to be meeting in the, in the meeting open agenda.
You could put this, open the agenda to the next meeting if you want.
It'll, it might be out by then. I might be sending it out.
Join me next week? Do you wanna have a follow-up meeting next week?
Is our biological electronic?
Yeah.
Okay.
But we can, hopefully, we get the meeting next week. We can bring like the people who have not been here up to speak. I don't, no, we need to. I mean, what people? I mean, the community or the rest of the? The rest of the committee and say, we need you to join us, we need to do this.
Probably want the community to.
Community, and the community. We are volunteers and we get, once we, we get all this finished up and Jack sends it out, the volunteers are gonna all be getting this information about what I want today.
Yeah, but all the rescue organizations and stuff won't pay. Be sure that I'll send it out on the side. So anybody that signed up to solve will get it.
Right.
Yeah, this is gonna have, if I'm sending it to, um, the res, the rescue committee, the, the, the items that we spoke of here, am, am I going to be putting them in here too? These are, I think these would be things that we would keep to ourselves.
Till, till we have it all together and then we're getting ready to present it to the city council.
Yeah, not, not put it out to the volunteers.
Just the volunteers behind us and getting them involved. They may have other ideas.
Oh, sure, they do. Some good ones too.
Right. And they have other topic points that they may bring up after this meeting.
And we need to be prepared so when the volunteers go off on their own, and they will, that how and what we do as a committee, because that happened even when we did that with Pima County. The, the groups of volunteers fragmented off and, and it worked pretty well. But, I mean, you could end up having a, remember we had, there was another group of people that decided to picket.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, and stuff like that. And that wasn't necessarily part of what I was part of.
Okay. But it got us a lot of publicity.
It did.
So this is completely the comfortable thing, sending this out to the rescue community, the Salvation Army group.
Yes.
Never moving to the local and normal.
Yes.
Because that's how I distributed the food that came in.
Okay, I have another idea that just popped in my head. If we write up, so we have people that can go sit at PetSmart, at Petco, that says, this is the situation, you're a registered voter and if you support, no kill. And we get their signatures and we can turn those and say, no kill. We need a petition to support this center that's turned into the city. If you've got, you've got pages and pages of registered voters saying, we are supporting this, it just say, you know, they may not be able to come down here, but they have given their support and these are people who are going in with animals. It's just a idea. So. It's got separation anxiety.
All right. With that, this meeting that we actually have, this whole meeting is February nineteenth. This, we are adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.